Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Aubrey Lane and I'm the Secretary of Transportation for the Great Commonwealth of Virginia. And I'd like to welcome you to today's workshop session of the Commonwealth Transportation Board. If you've ever been to one of our meetings, you know the first thing I always do is have the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't see a flag, but I would ask you to join me and rise with our Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and you can be seated. I want to, again, thank you for welcoming the Commonwealth Transportation Board to the town of Ashland and Hanover County for today's tour. And I would point out that it is an actual workshop session, which means that we do not take comments or any type of questions from the crowd, but we're delighted that you're always here, you're all here today. We are here today for fact gathering information only. There's not going to be any vote taken out of this. There'll be public hearings where everyone will be allowed to speak before there's actually any vote taken on this in the future. So I just wanted to make sure you understood how we were interacting today. The Lobey Theater we're in, I want to thank Clark Mercer's here, I think he's the Chairman of the Theater, and we appreciate the time and the dedication he did. And I always recognize one of my colleagues here, Kelly Thomason, the Secretary of the Commonwealth, is also here, so thank you. Now, I'd like to recognize a few community leaders who are going to be able to speak this morning, because we did allow three individuals to speak. I want to thank them for their offers and meeting space and other tour assistance. First of all, we'll call you up later, but Jim Foley, the Mayor of Ashland, will be coming up. Thank you, sir, for hosting us today. Bucky Stanley, the Chair of Hanover County Board of Supervisors, thank you, sir. And then, of course, Robert Lindgren, the President of Randolph-Macon College, thank you, sir. So they'll all have a chance to address us this morning as we go through that. Now, we understand that the town and county's concerns about the impacts of this potential rail improvements. So the CTP is here today at your request, and I would say to you, this is somewhat unusual, but we did find it something compelling that we wanted to see for ourselves before we took any votes on this, to get a better view of the existing conditions and the scale of the improvement alternatives being considered in the DC-to-RVA draft environmental impact statement. And let me just point out, no decisions have been made. We have been following the federal mandated process of going through this. So to suggest that something's already been decided would be inaccurate. We are truly here to try to understand what the impacts would be to what we believe is needed improvements in the corridor, but we also always weigh the benefits versus the impacts and the cost to the community. So there has been no decision as of yet to be determined. So the decision on what to build, I know is going to be a difficult one. I wish I could stand up here and tell you how to be moved forward, and everybody in this room will probably be happy. I don't think that'll be the case. But I do believe we need to be transparent and accountable to you as we lay out for you how we come to the decision we ultimately come to. So while I can't guarantee an outcome, I can guarantee you a process that will be transparent, that will be accountable to you. You will have your say and have a chance before we take any votes to make any comments that you want to think would be germane to this as we go forward. As we get closer, the draft study will shed light on the advantages and disadvantages of each of these alternatives, and we hope that you will comment on that. And those comments could be not only in the form of communication with us like today, but they can be written comments, and there will be continued ample opportunity for you to make those comments. We understand that you wish to have more input with our staff in this process, and one of the things I've asked Director Mitchell is make that happen with some additional series of working sessions, which he's going to talk about, because we are not rushing this project through. What we are doing is moving deliberately through based on the federal process that requires us in these environmental documents to make decisions at significant points. And let me also point out, too, it's not just some bureaucrat saying meet this day. There's also the unfortunate consequence of losing monies if we don't follow the process. So we're not rushing it to say it's all baked in. We're trying to meet what the public's expectations are for transparency and accountability with the federal process of what they require us to do in making these decisions in these impact areas. Again, I want to frame the expectations for today's event. This is a Commonwealth Transportation Board fact-finding tour, and we will follow that protocol, that format that I've talked about, that we've gone with tours and meetings and the workshop sessions. We are allowing, although there will be no public on our tour bus, there will be officials, and there will be the media, so that everything that will be said or discussed will be subject to transparency, and the media can record that. There will be no deliberations on the bus, there's no secret votes or anything, but I'm sure there will be questions back and forth as we respond, like any normal human would, to what they see and what, and help them make their decisions here. And as I said, we are going to allow remarks from Mayor Foley, Supervisor Stanley, and President Lindgren here. Now, the other thing I would point out, we're going to be covering quite a bit around today. In the town and the county, there's a walking part of this, there's a presentation to start, there's a bus tour so we can see the impact of the bypass. So we're going to be keeping things moving along pretty quickly. So with that, I'm going to, oh, I did want to mention, too, I don't know if y'all saw, but I sure saw the beautiful piece of the day's Richmond Times is back. (Applause) I thought that was pretty lucky that it happened on the same day that we were out here. Just so you know, I'm sure there's no coincidence of that at all, but just so you know, I do believe in small towns. I, even though I'm from Virginia Beach, I, my partner lived in Gloucester, Virginia. And that was a town, I won't say similar, but was having some of the issues of being revolting, revolting in terms of going forward, and they liked the quality of life, and they were dealing with a Walmart that was being outside of town and this would have destroyed Main Street. What we did is, obviously to be in the real estate business, we bought a shopping center and donated it to the county to put the library in and threw off cash to help the shops on Main Street. And, by the way, we painted a mural. We didn't get it as cheaply as y'all did. I think you got a good deal for what I see for $25,000, but we put a mural, that area is known for Pocahontas and Captain John Smith, the Waukesha Indian Tribe there. So we put a mural up, just like you did, in talking about the history and what was important to the community. So I bring that up, I do respect both the county and the town and the college of what they're trying to protect. What we've got to do is make sure we balance that against serving the needs of transportation in the corridor. So with that, thank you again for having us. I'm sure you'll hear from me later in the day, and I'll turn it over to Director Mitchell now to get the program going.
Thank you. (Applause) Thank you, Secretary Lane. My name is Jennifer Mitchell, I'm the Director of the Department of Rail and Public Transportation. And on behalf of my agency, I'd like to thank all of you for being here today, for welcoming us to Ashland and our Hanover County tour. What I'd like to do at this point is recognize the two speakers that'll be coming up and going through a briefing for all of you. Emily Stock is our Manager of Rail Planning and the Project Manager for the DC-to-RVA Study. She'll also be joined by John Morton with HDR, who's one of our consultants, who will talk through a few of the slides with her as well. Emily will also, at the end of, we will also then introduce the speakers, as Secretary Lane mentioned, who'll have five minutes apiece to make some comments and address the board. We will also grab a working lunch. Emily will also walk everybody through a very detailed itinerary and share with you what we'll be seeing along the way on the tour as well. So as Secretary Lane mentioned, we have a tight schedule, we're going to be moving quickly. I'll apologize in advance if it seems like we're moving quickly, but we have a lot of ground to cover this afternoon. So with that, I'd like to invite Emily and John to join us up here.
Thank you, Director Mitchell, and thanks, everybody, for having us today. So as Jennifer mentioned, we do have a full itinerary, and I want to mention the purpose of the presentation, the purpose of starting the tour here today in a theater that seats this big of a group, is in order for folks to visualize the footprint of the various alternatives that are being considered in the DC-to-RVA study before we leave for the tour. I want to make sure that everything that the CTP hears today is the same thing that the public hears. So I don't want anyone to miss anything, and as Secretary Lane mentioned, we'll be having deliberations on the bus or on the walking tour. We really just want to make sure that people are going the right direction as we're on the walking tour and go through a lot of the details of what we'll be seeing in the presentation before we get started. So I'll go through our agenda for today. I'll be giving you a project overview and an overview of the alternatives that are being considered in the draft environmental impact statement for the Ashland area in particular and Hanover in particular. And then we'll have remarks by local officials, as Jennifer mentioned, and we will be having a working lunch. And that, at that time, we do have lunches here for the CTP. There are wonderful local eateries that are very close by and walking distance for those of you who are picking up your lunch elsewhere. But that will begin about 12:15, and during that working lunch, I'll be going through the actual turn-by-turn tour directions. And I believe we do have maps of the tour available, they are on the CTP website as well, and I have some extra copies back here. So that's what we'll be reviewing during the lunch period. And then at 12:45, we'll go for the walking tour, we expect that to take about an hour, and then we'll be, the CTP will be boarding the bus at 12:45, sorry, at 1:45, and we'll be doing the Hanover County tour from 1:45 to 2:45. So that's the lay of the land for today, and I'll go ahead and get started with some of the project information. This is the project schedule for the Tier Two Environmental Impact Statement that the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation is conducting right now with the leadership of the Federal Railroad Administration. And it's, we have a three-year schedule to do this environmental impact statement, and our goal is to have a record of decision from the Federal Railroad Administration at the end of the process. But right now, we are working on the draft environmental impact statement that will include the alternatives that have been considered for the full 123-mile-long corridor, and it will include the analysis that our team has been through, the screening process that our team has been through, will have wealth of information about the natural and cultural resources that are along the route and the potential impacts of each one of the alternatives that have been considered. So that's what we're working on right now, and we expect that to be ready within the next month or so when we have approval from the Federal Railroad Administration. And then we also will have some public hearings that will go along with that release and a public comment period before we start working on the final environmental impact statement. Now, the reason for the study is volume and capacity. We expect volume increases over the years, depending, I mean, really regardless of whether we do any of the volume increases that are being proposed by the DC-to-RVA rail project. There is natural growth that is expected in this corridor, but our project is also recommending that there be about nine more round trips for passenger rail in the corridor. And so this slide shows our no-build alternative as compared with some of the other alternatives that we're looking at specifically in the Hanover and Ashland area. So we do a no-build alternative so that we can compare the improvements that we're doing. And so the freight trains that are on the slide are shown in red, the Amtrak trains, the passenger trains are shown in blue. And today, we have about 20 passenger trains that travel this route per day and 22 freight trains. The growth that's anticipated in freight, regardless of our project, is about 2% per year. So that top row shows a no-build and shows the increase over the years in freight from 2025 to 2045. And then our build alternatives, which means that our build alternatives would either add a third track through Ashland or potentially a bypass around Ashland, would be consistent in the number of new passenger trains in the corridor. We'd be looking at adding nine round trips or 18 additional trains, passenger trains to the corridor for either alternative. And the reason I point this out, the different alternatives are listed here, if a bypass were chosen, if that bypass alternative were chosen, all of the trains that currently stop in Ashland would be expected to continue to stop and go through the train tracks that go through town now. And then also, five of the nine round trips, we would expect to stop in Ashland as well. Five of the new passenger rail round trips would stop there as well. But all of the other trains, all the freight trains and the additional passenger trains that would not stop in Ashland would use the bypass. So I just wanted to point out some of the volumes that we're looking at and some of the reasons for the project. So I'm going to talk about the alternatives that we considered in our draft environmental impact statement process. We looked at quite a few alternatives for a third track through town and also looked at different alternatives for bypass alignment. And part of what we'll be seeing today is that detail of the number of tracks that are out there now, the amount of space that they take up now, the dimensions of sidewalks and parking. So this is the existing condition that we have today with two tracks through town. There are travel lanes on either side of those tracks, there's parking and also sidewalks. This is the first proposal that we have for three tracks through town. We looked at the possibility of keeping the existing two tracks in the location that they are now and then adding a third track to the east side. And I'll talk a little bit about dimensions. From center line to center line, we're looking at about 15 feet. And so if you added three tracks through town, that total would be about 50 feet. And of course, that's not set in stone, we haven't gone through our preliminary or even final engineering, but I just want to give everybody an idea of the footprint that we're talking about so that we can keep that in mind as we're taking the walking tour today. So under this proposal for three tracks through town in the current location, we'd be able to preserve sidewalk and travel lane on one side and sidewalk on the other side. And the minimum sidewalk that we're looking at would be about three feet, it could be larger than that depending on the option that's chosen, we're going to be showing some different options, and then also the travel lane and a wider sidewalk on the other side. This is an option that shows the tracks being centered through town. This provides a little more flexibility with sidewalk and travel lane. But it also requires that we re-center those existing tracks that we have through town We also looked at below grade. We looked at a tunnel option, two different tunnel options. One, the one that's shown here, is a cut-and-cover tunnel. It would only be about three feet below ground, and the clearance would have to be 27 feet in order to accommodate those, the freight trains that would be going through. And the dimensions of this in terms of where it would start and where it would end, it would start around Vaughn Road and it would go all the way down to Ashcake Road, so it would be a little less than two miles in length. And that's in order to accommodate the grade change. Trains are very sensitive to grade change and they require a very gradual slope, unlike roadways. We also looked at a deep bore tunnel that would go down into the bedrock about 60 feet, and it would need to be in that solid rock, and this would take about four miles in length to allow for grade changes because it's much deeper. And again, those tunnel options would be for the passenger trains that aren't stopping in Ashland and for freight rail as well. Now, this is a map of the bypasses that we considered. We considered western bypass alignments and also eastern bypass alignments. And it also shows the station locations that are being considered. We are looking at a station in the middle of Ashland, close to the location that it is today. We're also, at the request of the community, are looking at a couple of other options. We're looking at an option just north of town, an option south of town, which we'll talk about more in a little bit and show you today on the tour. And then, of course, we'll be driving around to look at the western bypass option as well. So the station options that are being considered are noted with the pink flags. And I should also mention, this presentation is, will be available to everybody. If you can't see everything right now, it will be available on the CTP website after the meeting. So just to go through some of the issues that we came across with eastern bypasses. I know that folks are interested in our Alternatives Technical Report and the screening that happened that got us to the alignment for the western bypass that we have now. We found that an east-side bypass would have more property impacts than a west-side bypass, more commercial businesses would be impacted, and there would be a crossing of I-95 and Route 1 that would be necessary. We also looked into the possibility of using the existing short-line railroad along the Buckingham branch, and that's something that's been studied quite a bit over the years. That is a single-track, short-line railroad with lots of slopes and curves. It would require upgrades and additional right-of-way to make it work. But that is something that we looked at. It would also require that we join back up with the mainline CSX railroad around Dazwell. That's where the Buckingham branch railroad joins back up with the mainline now, and it is a historic area, there are historic buildings very close to that interchange, and it would require a connection and a wide track to build that, and so there would be quite a few impacts. So I'm mentioning this just to let you know about some of the work that we did through screening and some of our findings that will be explained in more detail in the draft environmental impact statement. So we talked, I talked about the alternatives that have been screened through this process and then also about the western bypass and third track through town options. We also have, so I'm going to talk about just the alternatives that have come through the process and that we'll be focusing on today. And this provides a summary of the alternatives that we're still working on in detail through the environmental impact statement process. And next, I'll turn things over to John Morton, who will talk about the footprint of the potential alternatives through town and station elements, parking, station building options, and platforms, to give you an idea of the scale of the potential improvements that we're talking about for stations through town. I also want to mention that our team looked at a no additional track option through town, so leaving two tracks through town, having the third track end north and in south of town. And our preliminary work showed that the volume that we expect over the next few years from 2025 to 2045 just doesn't give us, this scenario doesn't give us the volume, the capacity that we need for the volume that we're expecting. So I want to just let you all know that we are working through these different alternatives. We've considered quite a bit in terms of modeling volumes, but also natural resources and cultural resources along the different alignments. So I'll turn things over to John to talk about station.
Thank you, Emily. As Emily mentioned, the, you know, because of some of the restrictions and the limited, you know, space, how the station looks and where the station is located actually has an effect on how the tracks would look and, you know, be located in Ashland. We're going, the walking tour will go down to where the station, the current station is, and you can see the existing platform, both on the east side and the west side. This shows what we would propose. If, when you look at the type of trains that would be running, the Amtrak and the Federal Railroad Administration recommend that you have a platform of 850 feet. And so the top figure there shows what the 850-foot platform looks like. This is under two tracks, this would be the existing conditions today. There would be a platform on the east side and the west side. They would start about where the station building is and move north 850 feet. It would require that Center Street be relocated, you know, moved out to accommodate the platform with. Those platforms would be 15 feet wide and they would be eight inches above top of rail. When you go out there today, the east-side platform is about three feet wide and is at about the top of the tie. So we're going, you know, we have to raise it up, the platform up, to eight inches above top of rail, that's, you know, about 14 inches higher than it is today, and it would need to be 15 feet wide, so if you can kind of visualize how that would look. We would propose to put a station location and parking. We show that just right there, a little bit north of where the existing station is, and we would give a, have a pedestrian overpass that would allow access from the station to the east-side platform or the west-side platform. The second concept is to, is a concept, the lower one, is to minimize impacts to Ashland by constructing a much shorter-length platform. The minimum length that's allowed would be 300 feet. This would be about a 350-foot platform. It would stop short of Center Street, we wouldn't need to close, I'm sorry, College Avenue, we wouldn't need to close College Avenue, or, you know, so you would continue through there. In this case, you know, what we would do is we would access the platforms through the pedestrian crossing to either at College Avenue or at England Street. And so you would get to the east side or the west side platform from the end of the platform. And that's designed to, you know, minimize the impact to, you know, both Center Street and to College Avenue. We would still need to widen out Center Street on, you know, between England Avenue and College Avenue, you know, because there's not quite enough space there if you put in the 15-foot platform. So if you, we put three tracks through town, the, these are the same kind of concepts. We would then make the east-side platform an island platform, which means it needs to be a little wider. It would have, it would serve both the track, the center track as well as the eastern track. That moves out, you know, if it's 850 feet, it moves out Center Street even more. The bottom one, once again, is to show you what it looks like if it would be a 350-foot platform. Once again, we would access those platforms by the pedestrian crossing at College Avenue would be your primary access for those. One of the things that the community asked was to take a look at other station locations, and they offered several different scenarios, one south of town and a couple north of town. This is a station that would be located just a little bit south of Ashcake, about a mile south of here. The Ashcake offers a little bit better connectivity east-west, so that's why we looked at that. There is space for the station there, it'd be 850-foot platforms with the parking and It'd be 850-foot platforms with the parking and access from Ashcake Road. And so, if we moved the station there, we would eliminate it from the downtown area. That would be the concept for if we didn't have the station in the downtown area, move it down south of Ashcake. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Emily.
So, we know that there are other plans that are being undertaken in the town of Ashland and specifically Randolph-Macon College as development plans to expand. We want to make sure that we're taking those into account as we develop alternatives and we refine alternatives. So, I'm showing you this. I'm sure that President Lindgren will expand on this. But this is the Randolph-Macon College plan for expansion. So, I want to make sure that everybody's aware that this is going on as well, and we would like to continue to work with the town and the county and the college to refine these alternatives. What John just showed you and what I showed you, those are conceptual renderings. They are meant to show a footprint in order to make some judgments at this stage of the process so that we get a good idea of the alternatives that we're considering and what they would actually look like in practice. And I want to stress that these alternatives can be refined as the process continues. As Secretary Lane mentioned, we would like to continue to meet with the county and the town and the college to refine these alternatives and really involve everyone in the design process once we get our draft environmental impact statement out to the public and we can really dig into the data that has come about as a result of that study. So, next steps, we right now have our draft environmental impact statement in for FRA review. We are hoping to have it out to the public in December and then to follow up with public meetings, public hearings in the month of January. And we would have something that would be in the Ashland area in addition to Richmond and Northern Virginia and Fredericksburg. We are anticipating that we would compile and summarize public comments that we get during the public comment period. And we've asked for an extension from FRA to 60 days. Originally, typically, we're required to have a 45-day public comment period. We understand this is over the holidays. We want to make sure that people have ample time to comment, so we're extending that to 60 days. When those comments are compiled and summarized, those will be available for review as well, and we are going to be transmitting those to the Commonwealth Transportation Board so that you all can have the full benefit of reviewing those comments in advance of any vote on a preferred alternative from this body. But there will be a preferred alternative that DRPT and FRA do offer as part of the draft and as a result of the data that has been collected. So, during 2017, the team will be looking at service development planning, which will help us decide what recommendations to make in terms of which trains would stop in which areas. We'll be looking at more closely at design elements. We'll be looking at signals and communications with CSX. And we'll also be incorporating the comments that we get from the draft process into the study so that we can make sure to address them in the final environmental impact statement. So, and as a result, we most likely will be refining some of the alternatives, as I mentioned. And so, getting that final environmental impact statement together, we're hoping that that will happen by the end of 2017, and if the process will be concluded with a record decision by the Federal Railroad Administration. So, that is what I have for this presentation. We do have some comments that the localities, representatives from the localities will be making. I'd like to start with Mayor Foley and then Bucky Stanley from the Board of Supervisors from Hanover would like to speak. You can come up next, and then President Lindgren from Randolph-Macon College. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. I want to short time you, so you can jump in. Thank you for being here. Really, really appreciate it. It has been said at the state level and in the public that Ashland wants to have its cake and eat it too. This is simply an outburst. We have repeatedly reached out to the RPT, allowing them to collaborate on a solution that's in the best interest of Ashland County. I hope to illustrate that right now. Your presence here today indicates to me you're willing to hear what we have to say. We are committed to helping make the DB2-RBA process a success. Thank you for being here. I want to be... And I'm also taking this opportunity to be perfectly clear to the public as well where the town stands on these issues. We are not obstructionist partners. We recognize the importance of this project to the state economy. In a few minutes, you'll have a tour of the town, and you'll see how well we coexist with the existing two rail lines and how we are already doing our fair share to support the Virginia transportation infrastructure. We are very proud to be a railroad town since our founding over 150 years ago. You each have a little bag with a book and an amazing 40-minute video that talks about how we got to where we are. When you walk out there, you'll say, "How did this happen?" That will explain it in a very entertaining manner. I want to talk about solutions. First, I do have a few important points. Point one, we are adamantly opposed to a third set of tracks through the historic central town. There is simply no room for a third... I'm running out of time. There's simply no room for a nerve track through town. That's not an engineering joint. When you go out there and look, it goes from sidewalk to sidewalk in the center. Many downtown businesses would have barriers right up to the storefronts that the third track has made. The third track would decimate our historic downtown business corridors, our prime historic housing neighborhoods, including Berkeley Town, our historic African-American community, and the center of Randolph-Macon College. We can live with any other solution other than that. This is our absolute position. We have almost $100 million worth of property along the tracks, houses and businesses. Additionally, the college has invested over $80 million in just the last six years. We're making a lot of investments, both privately in this area. All of this is at risk with the addition of a third set of tracks through town center. That tight fit also raises some serious safety concerns, which I don't have time to go into but now or we will later. Thank you for rejecting the 3-2-3 minor upgrades option because we do not want to be the bottom one. If you even see that, thank you for that. We also, and just to talk briefly about the station, we're open to putting that station anywhere, the shorter 350-foot one in the center. The only one we're opposed to is the longer 850-foot in the town center. Any other option, we're willing to talk to and we're open about. But, we're talking about the cake and eat it too. If the station and Amtrak service requires the third rail, we don't want it. The price is too high. I mean, we're very, very serious about that. We'd give up anything but that. If that's a maneuver to get us to go to the third rail, we don't want it. We would give up Amtrak service. We'd give up anything. The final point is, regardless of the other decisions you'll see on your tour, we clearly need better vehicular pedestrian emergency access across the tracks. And we strongly support grade-separated crossings, both at the north and south ends of town. You'll see that. Those are overpasses in plain English. What is the solution for Ashland? We absolutely support a bypass around Ashland. We absolutely support a bypass around Ashland. But which one? We need the time to sit down with the RPT, offer our ideas, and collaborate, come up with a bypass that makes sense. We treat by alternatives that we've considered with a bypass east of Ashland. One of those bypasses would take care of manage current right-of-ways and require far less private land. The other, as was mentioned, is the Buckingham branch trailer, an existing track bypass that exists. But we think we should really make a long, hard look at those other options. Although there are significant challenges with the eastern bypass options and cost, we must consider the cultural, economic, and historical cost of the destruction of the thriving community. If the process drives a schedule, please make collaboration part of the process and give us the time to come up with a solution that does the least harm. So, Emily, please make a choice that does the least harm and do not destroy the bypass that we're providing.
First things first, I've got a petition here from people in the town and in the county that just couldn't make it today. So, I want first things first, for the person that gave them to me early on, they'll be up here on the stage after me. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Bucky Stanley. I use Aubrey sometimes because I think it might help, but it hasn't so far. We'll see what comes of that. My real name is Aubrey Stanley, but known to many by Bucky. How do you get Bucky from Aubrey? My dad was Aubrey. His nickname was Buck, so I guess that's a kid. I'm the Viva Damp District Supervisor and Chairman of the Board of Supervisors of Hanover County. I've served on the board for 33 years. I am pleased to welcome the Commonwealth Transportation Board to Hanover. Your decision on how to improve rail service from Richmond to Washington DC will have a tremendous impact on current and future residents of Hanover County. Since 1982, Hanover County's comprehensive plan, as you see on the copy that's on over here, has been based on what is called Smart Growth Strategy, a plan to concentrate commercial and residential growth on public utilities along existing transportation corridors, primarily Route 1, Interstate 95, going north and south through the county, and Interstate 95 roughly tracking the county's southern boundary of Hanbaker County. The principal goal of this plan is to protect historic, environmental, and agricultural resources to serve the rural character of 70% of Hanover County. This strategy has involved some sacrifice by landowners in the rural areas who have given up the financial benefits they would have reaped by turning their land into subdivisions and shopping malls. The people who live in western Hanover County have chosen a rural lifestyle, removed from interstates, train tracks, and high-density development. It would be tragic. It would be tragic if these decades of preservation efforts were penalized by the decision to construct a high-speed rail corridor through cultural and environmental sense of the barriers. I wish I had someone to go along in a bus and a tour guide as you drive through the portion of western Hanover bisected by the proposed rail corridor. What you will notice when you leave south of town is immediately transitions into a rural western Hanover with very low sprawl. You'll see large, active working farms, many of them century farms, which are officially certified farms that have been within a single family for more than 100 years. You'll see one farm that was Crown Grant land and has been in the same family for nine generations. You will see at least two houses that were originally constructed before the Revolutionary War, and several more that were constructed around the time of the Civil War. You will see many of the 45 parcels, 45 parcels comprising of 2,428 acres crossed by the proposed route of western bypass. In addition to 24 parcels that immediately adjacent, most of these parcels have homes on them, some are stately homes, some are modest homes, but all homes to people who decided not to live close to the interstate highway or the railroad station. The 2002 TO-1 Record Decision for the DC to Charlotte Southeast High Speed Rail Program selected an incremental approach. A key element of this was to upgrade existing rail corridors instead of developing new corridors. I urge the Commonwealth Transportation Board to adhere to this approach. As I understand it, the TO-2 Environmental Study, Impact Study now includes four alternatives for the Ashland area. One, the no-bill option, in other words, to do nothing and let the existing corridors remain substantially as they are now. Two, the modified no-bill alternative involving improvements to the existing track, two tracks running through Ashland, but no addition of a third track, which we also support, no third track. That was introduced at the meeting in Patrickina High School, an information meeting, which Emily and others were there. We appreciate their being there. 600-plus people came in opposition to the plan. Add a double... Add the third track along existing track. Add a double-track bypass to the west, which we do not support. I urge the Commonwealth Transportation Board to consider a fifth option that would be consistent with the incremental approach advocated in the TO-1 Record of Decision to upgrade existing rail corridors instead of developing new corridors. The fifth option would consist of a modified no-bill alternative for the two existing tracks running through the town of Ashland, plus improvements to the tracks comprising the Buckingham branch running to Richmond through the eastern part of Hanover County. Improvements to the Buckingham branch would enable it to bear a greater portion of the projected increase in passenger rate and freight traffic, thereby alleviating the congestion that will otherwise result at Ashland with only the modified no-bill. We understand the staff, as large as discounted feasibility of utilizing the Buckingham branch as the primary route through Hanover County, but I encourage it be studied as a secondary route, which if improved, could make the modified no-bill option through Ashland more feasible. Now, I've been working with a group of citizens in west of Hanover County, known as the families under the rail. They've been working very hard, and I've been meeting them quite a few times, looks like every Monday or Tuesday, in that part of my district. They've been working with Good, with Mr. Hazen, Ms. Pritchett. The mayor's been there at meetings. Some county council people have been there, very informed individuals. They've hired an attorney to help them with that. I don't know why we have to do this, but some things we just have to do. Very informed CSX retirees also working with this group, and these people know how trains run, an actual engineer, locomotive engineer, and dispatchers, people that know how they work. They're working at this time on another plan. And I think you'll probably hear that this afternoon at your meeting in Fredericksburg because I know some citizens are going up there. I have a lot of that you have received today also from the counties of Carolina and Spotsylvania, the town of Ashland, and Howard County. We're also talking to Stafford and Fredericksburg. The issue that I'm trying to get across is that we know nobody's trying to say it's got to go to Hanover, staff, or wherever it's got to go. We know you're here doing a job, and we appreciate that. We're just asking for a little bit more time that we can actually work together with you, work with the town of Ashland, work out of a sensible solution to it all. We thank you for all these things. We thank you for coming to Hanover, and thank you for letting you hear my comments. Thank you.
Welcome, members of the Commonwealth Transportation Board, Mr. Secretary. I'm Robert Lindgren, president of Randolph-Macon College, and I thank you all for visiting Ashland, our college home, and for allowing me to speak with you today. My comments are just six minutes in length, and I respectfully request the opportunity to deliver them to you in full. I will endeavor to impress on you as strongly as possible that a third rail through our campus and Ashland would irreversibly cut our college in half and fundamentally damage Randolph-Macon College as we know it. Today and in the weeks to follow, you will be considering important options regarding high-speed rail, but your decision is even more important than that. You will decide whether Randolph-Macon continues to survive and thrive. For 187 years, RMC has educated tens of thousands of future leaders from Virginia and around the world. Our runway include notable leaders from all walks of life, including history makers in business, politics, the law, and beyond. Today, our student body is the largest in college history, having experienced an unprecedented 26% increase in student growth in recent years, unprecedented given the steep challenges facing higher education today that have sadly caused many colleges to fare not nearly as well. This success has been made possible by the superb work of 440 faculty and staff who educate and mentor our students with accurate... and mentor our students with excellence and by the commitment from our college community in partnership with the town of Ashland to literally transform our campus in order to grow the college. This commitment was inspired by our 2009 Campus Master Plan and over 12,000 alumni and friends donating more than 125 million in private funding supporting it. As a result, under Phase One of our plan, as Mayor Foley mentioned, nearly $80 million has been spent on eight new and four renovated facilities in the past six years. I will repeat, over $80 million in new and renovated facilities in six years. Information on these facilities is included in my written submission and I hope you will have a chance to see them in person today, along with our historic old campus with three buildings on the National Register. Phase One of our campus plan concludes next summer with the completion of a new science building. And most of that Phase One investment has been made to the east side of the tracks. Phase Two envisions a light financial commitment on the west side of the tracks, these red buildings here. Eight buildings and two athletic fields. It is clear that our venerable history has been met with a future that is brighter than ever for the college, but a third rail through the middle of our campus, a campus that borders the tracks for nearly 3,000 feet, nearly ten football fields, with 70% on both sides, would severely damage everything we have worked so hard to achieve. Of course, at the heart of this discussion are the present and future students of Randolph-Macon College. I am the one speaking here today, but I'm here to represent them. They are impacted most by your decision. Our students, faculty, staff, alumni, visitors, college families, they cross the tracks all day, every day, between the east and west sides of our campus. And last year alone, over 100,000 visitors came to our campus, 100,000. Since I first learned of these proposals on June 9, I have gone on record many times vigorously opposing them and I do so again today. More recently, I've been advised by several folks, including state officials, that the original proposal for that massive downtown Ashland commuter station, eight hundred and fifty-foot raised platform and commuter lot on and bisecting our campus made no sense. And to have such a major stop so close to Richmond would be unnecessary and a tremendous waste of resources. But on Friday, just four days ago, I learned of that new, albeit slimmed-down proposal for a downtown Ashland station. It was presented as a compromise, but one that still makes no sense. Turning College Avenue, a street lined with town residents, student residences, and classrooms into a commuter thoroughfare would be incredibly unsafe and unacceptable. I want to speak very plainly here. A smaller downtown station is no consolation if it means a third rail goes with it. A third rail is a disaster for the college and for the town of Ashland, period. Of the options you have before you, implementing a plan that divides and severely damages the town and Randolph-Macon College should be rejected. A bypass option simply must be pursued. Thank you again for your willingness to visit our town and our campus today.
It would be nice to be where there are no heartfelt opinions on anything, but I do appreciate the presentation given by the DRPT. I do appreciate the comments by our guest speakers. I started out by saying, you know, my affinity in terms of a small town. I should disclose some other things. My son used to work for Hanover County, so I'm very, very familiar with what could be impacted on a bypass in Hanover County. And my brother-in-law graduated from Randolph-Macon College and actually serves as a legal representative one for the college. So I have this coming at me from all different directions in that. So I didn't want you to think I was being favored one over the other. So with that, we are going to take a quick break to do a working lunch and then we will resume at what time about 12:15 for our walking tour, I believe, the walking tour. Emily will be giving instructions. So we'll have about a 20-minute break here for lunch and then Emily will be back up and tell us what we do from here. So thank you very much.